Was. So, okay. Okay, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I can't get Cindy. If you push the red button until there something comes on that LCD screen on the top there, it should say it's turning on. See, they were all turned off, so those.
It looks like Ellen's mic is not working.
I just.
Hey Bob, it's Erin again. Sorry, I was trying to get Cindy and I need to get ahold of her, so it's just gonna be you on the phone here right now, okay?
There, now it's working.
Yes, I'm gonna put you on speaker right now. Can you hear me?
Guys, okay? Ready? Good evening, everyone. I call to order the special meeting of the River Falls Board of Education on Monday, August second. This meeting has been properly notified. I want to make a comment about the fact that there are four board members present. We have two, one that is for sure on the phone. We're trying to make contact with the other person. I'm sorry. At this time of the year, it can be a complicated task to be able to call a special board meeting when everybody is able to be present. We didn't have time to wait as we wanted to be able to get into this conversation. So the way that the evening is going to flow is we are first going to have a presentation from our superintendent. And then we will take public comment. It is likely that the board will have some conversation after that, but this is primarily an opportunity for the board to be able to hear from the superintendent for the community as well, because this is the process that we use to be able to hear from the here superintendent's recommendation. So I'm sorry about the sound. Hopefully I can sort it out. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Benson.
With all my high-tech skills, I'm wondering if it's getting feedback with two mics being too close together. A few reasons, just to give some background for the meeting that's being held tonight. Stacy mentioned some of those reasons. Really, the intention is for the board to have some discussion, for the district to continue to be transparent in what exactly is going through your minds at the school district? What are you thinking when you are making decisions moving forward into the coming year? What are you thinking specifically on the topic of COVID prevention and COVID mitigation plans? And so disclaimer number one is none of this is final, but there will be a set of recommendations placed before the board next Monday, a week from tonight, at which time all of those decisions will be made. So to be clear, we purposefully scheduled this meeting to continue to be transparent, to identify some things that that were weighing, that are weighing frankly heavy on our mind. And so in this presentation, what I tried to do, I'm gonna go through quickly. I ended up overdoing the number of slides probably, but it was my method of attempting to, one, display the different kind of variables that we are thinking about and that we are considering. Two, for us to create a document, so there's something in writing, both for parents and students, but also for some of the board members who are not here tonight, to open up the line of communication a little bit further so that we can make a decision that will please, I'm quite positive, at least fifty-one percent of the people next Monday. Said with humor. So. Very serious matters, I hope I don't get criticized starting off, but it's gonna be a little bit of humor, so that's the superintendent talking to his assistant explaining that he's going to a board meeting tonight, he has corrupted, uh, terrorism, the right of man and the conversation. Pretty serious work involved. So I wanted to identify a couple of things, like what are some of the guiding principles that you're using in thinking about recommendations that are brought forward? And the first two I separated on purpose, they really stand out. Obviously safety, I don't think we need to explain that in any great depth. But we also are trying our darkest to prioritize in school construction. We wanna, we wanna hit it here. We wanna teach them in our school, but again, we have to find out the safest way to do that for students and for staff. There's the equity issues at play. We need to be thinking about some more marginalized populations that may not have the same kind of advantages in their home or at school that exist in other families. We're gonna have to be flexible. Whatever plan we approve, whatever we're talking about tonight, whatever is approved next Monday, we need to accept that things may change and they may shift. We have a desire to shift and change, but often, no we do not. And then again, we communicate through our research, make sure we're, we're being educators with each other, we're teaching each other, we're studying, looking at the research, being truthful, doing our own. Those are some of the guiding principles that we have as we're putting together this plan, and you better help. So again, we've used this, uh, various board sites at the same point. We're back adding him with this new variant that really was causing the next set of concerns. The variant, to be clear, would we be at this place? Would we have the need for such great debate if there was no compensation going on in our nation regarding the variant? I, I think not. I think there would be far less compensation. It would be easier decisions would, would come from that league, whereas this variant now causes a, a new set of concerns, things to think about, things to ponder. One of them, the first thing I mentioned up there is this particular variant accounts for eighty percent of newly diagnosed cases. Second note is it's more transmissible to children and widely trans, more, uh, transferable qualities, meaning more transferable, more contagious than earlier versions of COVID. I'm mentioning these things because they're worthy of consideration, not to scare children, not to provoke fear, not to get into debates where this is not but a bunch of propaganda, these are all relevant information from reputable sites. And I provided that link on the slide for your review and your next slide please. So I put these old slides in here. That last slide said if not for the variant Delta and others that are troubling right now. If not that, let's take a look back in time where we were back in December, and I shared this slide with the board for the month of May. So that forty-eight point seven is the new daily confirmed cases right off of Pierce County's website, reported within the River Falls School District. That's all ages, not school children, all ages over the last seven days. That was back in December. Next slide please. May twenty-sixth, we had a board meeting. We said, look at the difference between those numbers what they were back in December and where they are today. How about we go to lots on masks for summer school and see how it goes? Next slide please. Currently now, those numbers are ticking up slightly. I'm not alarmed. I'm not proclaiming they're flying through the roof. But presumably, again, back to the COVID variant, Delta variant concerns, what will those numbers become? Next slide. The last couple of slides I showed you, we put actually worth in the neighborhood of saying COVID numbers are still pretty low by comparison to that case slide we had under medicine. It looks like we're not in a lot better, uh, a lot worse position today with COVID numbers than what we were in May. So again, we flatten the curve. We all heard that, we support the flatten curve, we got a flatten curve, we keep climbing and spiking. We've done that as a parent. We've done a lot of that, particularly here in our region. What lies ahead? I don't know. I'm not a mom. I must say that for sure speculation of the variant is what's causing the greatest angst with these decisions today. Next slide. So I put this on just for the sake of bringing this to the attention of the board and for other people listening. So one point would be, okay, if you start with masks today, maybe one to school year, or if you say it's optional masks, just leave it optional for everybody. But you always wanna have this disclaimer standing with this asterisk that says, but if nothing changes, then we're gonna be in school. This slide represents, it's difficult for us to mathematically, rather than automatically, but for the sake of the presentation, to show you this Harvard model, right now we would be in the yellow. Current status in our area, we're in the yellow. The only way you can green is if you have less than one case for one hundredth of a people. Personally, I'm not sure how long it's gonna take for COVID to completely go away, but we're only gonna have one case of one hundredth of a people. Personally, yellow to me is somewhat worth celebrating, uh, helping know if you're gonna be infected with COVID, that hospitalized and become very sick or worse. Numbers don't mean much. At any point, we're still in that yellow Harvard model. So hard to just say, let's not require masks. For me personally, would lean on, based on the lower numbers of received COVID cases today versus what we had seen, when we were in the midst of this back in November, December, early stages of pandemics, and last year, the numbers are clearly better. I have it largely due to the vaccine and COVID. So now, next slide please. What other considerations should, should we have? You might call it personalities, some would call it political opinions, some might refer to some medical scientific opinions and or evidence. And so I just listed a few questions here. Again, part of the effort here is to say out loud to the board and the community, what are the things that are going through our mind? What are we thinking about with all of these decisions? Just showed you some slides that say COVID has to happen in our area right now. What are some other things that we're hearing from public commentary and that we're thinking ourselves? What's the educational impact? Do masks limit facial expression and language development? Some of those teachable moments for our teachers? What about the dirty mask theory? Poorly fitted masks, they're not effective at all to the behavior of anyone. There's a lack of oxygen. We're, we're putting fear in mind of our children, that they're either gonna catch the disease or they're gonna spread the disease. Except, what do medical experts tell us about the science and the research? And how do we weigh all this up? What Ann Martha has to say about whether or not we should implement certain remedial measures? Based on her own opinion over coffee, we might want to lean a little bit more, no offense to Ann Martha, but we might want to list, list some medical experts on some of these topics, because we're educators. Next slide please. Some more parental perspectives. Please let me, as a parent, decide if my child wears a mask respectfully, remove the district, come to the decision. As much as this parent, I'll decide. Adults in my home have posted the vaccine maybe. I've got a five-year-old son, a nine-year-old daughter. I understand there's some risks in researching this, but I also saw what happened to my son and my daughter socially, emotionally, academically with the last year and a half COVID, and I don't want any more to do with that. So if this period is done, so no matter what, that's the last of them for us. We've seen enough of this. We're done. We're done. We're gonna roll the dice, we can handle the demands. I think it's, um, we're overdoing some of our conversations, and what we're doing aren't mitigation evidence. Whatever your arguments are, they're all open, man. Next slide please. So what do some of these experts tell us the American Association Academy, maybe my bad, of pediatrics recommends, and their link is on this slide as well? Um, universal masking in schools at this time, and they list their reasons why. Next slide please. CDC recommends basically the same. Reference to that link is there as well. Next slide please. Public health, similar, to support the CDC and the AAP guidance. We'll change the close contact rule of security that we had last two thousand and three. Everybody wears masks. We have far less close contact orders, including school. Next slide. So option one, what is being presented?
Tonight is that we have three options. Clearly, this presentation tonight has more to do with masks than all of the other mitigation efforts that we will continue to do in the district. I like to use the term layered mitigation, that we have to continue to look at other layers of mitigation, not just the mask issue alone. Uh, and so if we relax, other mitigation efforts along with the masking, how much of a concern might that become? So first option is optional masks, everybody. Students, staff, entire district. Next option, next slide. Vaccine availability, uh, is only, it's only available for ages twelve and over, so option two says, alright then, if you're a, uh, twelve years and older, seventh grade through senior year, it was your choice, it's your responsibility, you got vaccinated, you didn't, it was a choice there, it's your choice to wear, wear a mask to school or not. However, grades PK through six, they're not eligible for the vaccine, so a middle-of-the-road option to consider is that that age group would continue to wear masks. Next slide please. And of course, option three is require masks, all grades PK through twelve. Proactive measure, get ahead of the variant, don't let the variant, um, don't remove all of those layers of mitigation. Don't let the variant, uh, come in here like a tidal wave. Take that mitigation plan to require masks. So those are the three options. I wanted to present all of those thoughts kind of collectively, again, for the missing board members, for these board members, those listening at home. It helped me to kind of go through some of the things to help explain what are we pondering, what are we thinking about with all of this? And with that, I will give the mic back to you.
First of all, let's just see, do board members have any questions of clarification about the slides? We won't discuss them, but there would be a question of clarification. Jamie, I wondered, am I on?
Look at the back.
I think you're on.
Yep, definitely on. Jamie, um, I wanted to go back and ask about your slide that was talking about the increase in cases at three hundred percent. And did I understand it correctly in that you were also citing that, um, that hospitalizations are also up three hundred percent? Can we flip back to that slide just so I, I wanna make sure I understand what that is?
I liter, I'll tell you, the source of the information came directly off of the website that I cited there. And, um, I think it was a time span of a month that that was referencing, between June and July. Uh, keep going back, 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 there.
Yeah, that one there. I just wanna make sure I understood that that's what that.
That's nationally, between June nineteen and June twenty-three. Um, overall, all states included, all, the entire nation. That's in accordance with, uh, what's on the CDC's website.
So it's saying COVID cases have increased nationally three hundred percent, along with parallel increases in hospitalizations and deaths.
Yes.
So we're saying all three of those things are all up three hundred percent, or it's just they're?
I got you. No, I, that, that I don't, I don't know that hospitalizations and deaths are up three hundred percent. I do not know that. I personally, when I saw that, took that to mean simply the number of positive cases has increased exponentially, three hundred percent. Naturally, to no surprise to anybody probably in this room, so too would be the s- uh, seriousness, hospitalizations. So too would be deaths. But not necessarily hospitalizations and deaths increasing at three hundred percent.
Okay.
I'm glad you asked, because that was definitely not, not my intent.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this point.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can wait, what? Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Um, the question I had is, it doesn't need to be answered right this second, but there, there would be a number of implications beyond just the, just the classroom environment, or, you know, what it means for things like, um, extracurriculars and, and visitors and those kind of things. I'm curious to know that, but I, I'm not sure if it's appropriate to, to get into some of those things quite yet.
I think that's an implication, and right now we're talking about clarifications.
Okay.
Are there any other clarifications about the website, or the, the presentation?
Jamie, one thing I didn't see up here, I, I looked at a national site today, I didn't look at Pierce County's. The percent of people in Pierce County that are currently fully vaccinated. The site I looked at today, New York Times site said thirty-six percent, Pierce County.
Roughly forty-seven.
Yeah, I, I, I read it's now slowly surpassed forty-five percent. It's still less than fifty. That includes ages sixty-five and older. The good news for that group is that they're at either eighty or eighty-five percent fully vaccinated. And so the, the vaccination rate is, as, as we all have heard, it is certainly one of those things that people need to think about in helping to keep our children in school. It will presumably be impacted by the vaccination rate. That's just how the science is gonna work. That's, uh, not, that's not an opinion.
But that forty-six percent you're saying is fully vaccinated, and that was on the Pierce County Public Health?
Yep, Pierce County's website. Erin, can you go to the last slide?
The other thing, Alan, that they have the link from AZ Snyder, you can stratify it by school district too. In River Falls, you know, within Pierce County or within Pierce and St. Clair County, uh, River Falls. I think it, it was just under fifty for, um, full series and over fifty for, um, at, at least one dose. So when I, when I, last I looked at it, which sometime yesterday.
Okay, at this point, the board welcomes public comment. I apologize for the, uh, the mic problems today, but hopefully that mic is going to pick you up quite well. You're welcome to come to the microphone. Please tell us your name, the school or schools where your children attend. And I'm going to ask you to limit your comments to two minutes, please. Would anyone like to address the board?
I'm very happy to see a lot more people here.
Could you please tell us your name and the schools for your, the schools that you represent? I think I know.
I live in River Falls, in the River Falls School District. I do not have children, I'm in the school district anymore. Actually, my children are in the class. Um, I just wanted to say that.
Could you tell us your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. So my name is, oh, that is loud now, is Jackie Nicum, and I live here in River Falls School District. And, um, actually, my children had gone to the Hudson School District, but, um, I'm really happy to see a lot more people here attending. I think this is really, really important. Um, I'm not gonna bore you with a whole lot of, I, I would disagree with a lot of the presentation. I, I find it, um, with all of the, um, back and forth that the CDC has done, I, I, I find it difficult to believe what they're even telling us any longer. So I'm just gonna read, uh, this is a statement from Governor Kim Reynolds of Iowa. She put out this statement on July twenty-seventh, just a few days ago. She said, "The Biden administration's new COVID-nineteen guidance, telling fully vaccinated Iowans to now wear masks is not only counterproductive to our vaccination efforts, but also not grounded in reality or common sense. I'm concerned that this guidance will be used as a vehicle to mandate masks in states and schools across the country, something I do not support." That's just from one of a number of other governors who are not supporting the new mask guidance. Thank you.
My name is Kristin Miller. I have a second grader, incoming second grader at Greenwood, and I just wanna thank you guys so much for the opportunity for us to come forward and speak tonight. Um, and that here are opinions and thoughts on things. I just really want to urge you as school board members to protect our children and to follow these guidelines that are put out by the Centers for Disease Control and the American Academy of Pediatrics that Jamie had mentioned earlier. And really, I encourage masks for all kids ages two and up. Um, this is science-based recommendations, and these are leading experts across our country. I liken the mask recommendations to the guidance provided by the AAP for children to ride in car seats or boosters. We wouldn't go against these recommendations because we think we know better. We trust their expertise and put our children in car seats because we know it's best practice and saves lives, similar to the recommendation for our children to wear masks. I'm not a public health expert, nor am I an epidemiologist, and I don't believe any of you are either. So let's defer to the experts who are and have our students' best interests at heart to keep safe. I understand that parents have concerns about masks. I get it. The guidance is continually changing from the Centers for Disease Control, and I agree that brings about concern. But we need to remember that that's science, and science is an ever-changing thing, and when we know more, we learn more and we do better. I know there's also concerns about the mental health aspect of children wearing masks in our school. And from my opinion, the mental health concern comes more from COVID-nineteen pandemic in itself, more of the lack of routine that our students have, the inability to socialize, not from the masks itself. My daughter had the opportunity last year to attend virtual. My daughter had the opportunity last year to attend virtual school within the district, and that clearly showed me that you don't need to be in person or without a mask in order to connect with our students. Her teacher did a wonderful job of connecting with her, and Emma's so excited to be able to hopefully go back to school in person and have her again this next year as well. I just want to thank you again for taking the time, and I guess I just really want to encourage you to follow the guidance of these experts that we're so lucky in our country to have and the science that they have. And I ask you to please consider protecting not only my child, but the other children within our district, and I encourage you to be proactive about this. Thank you.
I have a big voice, so I want to make sure that I don't cause any damage. Does that sound okay? I also want to thank you all for the job that you did last year.
Excuse me, could you please tell us your name and where your children attend?
Yeah, my name is Phil Fahey. I have a son that's entering first grade at Greenwood. As I was saying, unprecedented times, a lot of confusion. You guys did the best job you possibly could at managing your way through a situation that, you know, people really didn't know what was going on. Fortunately though, as the speaker right before me had said, you know, we do have some experts that are out there. And I wanted to bring with me tonight some statements that were made by Paul Alexander. Paul Alexander received a bachelor's degree in epidemiology from McMaster University in Hamilton, a master's degree from Oxford, and then he went on, he went on to receive his PhD from McMaster University's Department of Health, Research Methods, Evidence, and Impact. I'm going to try to be super brief, okay? So I'm going to not read this whole thing. You're probably looking at these pieces of paper, getting kind of nervous. I'm not gonna, all right? You can find this article on your own, or I'd be happy to send it to you. How did this blue surgical mask and white cloth mask come to dominate our daily lives? Indeed, the surgical masks and white cloth that are often homemade have become the most contentious and quarrelsome symbol and reminder of our battle with SARS-CoV-2 and the disease it causes, COVID-19. How dangerous is this virus and the Delta variant? Based on studies done by Professor John Leonidas at Stanford, we know we're dealing with a virus that has an infection fatality rate of .05 in persons 70 years old and under. This compares quite well with the IFR of most influenza viruses, and yet the draconian and massive reactions to COVID have never been employed during the flu season. In an emphasis of time, I'm going to jump to the final point that I'd like to make. I know y'all want to get home. There's a lot of research that supports that these masks just don't work. Fauci himself came out and said it on 60 Minutes. As a matter of fact, one of the leading doctors came out and said that a cloth mask is not effective after 20 minutes of use. Now, when my son was at school, he'd come home, I think he'd be soaked, all right? So he's sitting in front of his friends, he's talking to them, he's blowing droplets all over. The Delta variant's real, okay? But it largely doesn't affect kids because they don't have the ACE2 receptors in their noses. We get it, not little kids. There's really two things that I've heard from people in this community when it comes to school, and really not in this community. I deal with a lot of people throughout the United States. Number one, we want to keep our teachers safe. My employer required me to get vaccinated. Let's do the same for our teachers and the staff in this school and keep them safe. The other concern that I've heard from people is our children are going to go to the school, they're going to pick up this disease, and they're going to bring it to their grandparents who may be compromised. We'll handle that as parents. That's my job to manage. So if I want to bring my children around their grandparents after they've been at school unmasked, that's my right to do that. So in closing, I'm going to say what Paul had to say. Masking children is an absurd, illogical, nonsensical, and potentially dangerous as trying to stop every COVID case or stopping COVID at all costs. It's never going to happen. There will be more variants. Ironically, I wonder what happened to Alpha, Beta, and Gamma? We jumped right to Delta? Bizarre, okay? Masks are not needed in children because there is near zero risk for children. The risk of dying from COVID-19 is almost zero for young people. The issue of masks in children is really a risk management question for parents and any decision maker, and the science has settled it. Thanks.
I'm obviously too old to have children in this district, but until pandemic, I tutored almost 100 children in this district at Meyer and Westside, and I miss them very, very much. Jamie, thank you very much for this evening. I wish you would back up to the slide that the American Academy of Pediatrics had relative to why the children should be masked. Not an individual opinion, but the American Academy of Pediatrics. Thank you.
Just FYI, the AAP, their number one donor is Pfizer. Just keep that in mind. My name is Jill Ewald Chain, and I might have a child entering kindergarten depending on what you guys decide.
I apologize. I, pardon, okay. Steve, what did you want?
I asked Jamie to respond to that slide.
I guess I didn't understand that you were asking for Jamie to respond. I thought you wanted it to be back up there.
Well, I would say one reason why we are presenting these three options tonight and the board is discussing it and hearing comments from the community is that, as I tried to display in the slides, I can tell this story in a way that points you to current COVID data and suggests that it might be okay for us to just have it be optional. Then when I go over to people that know more about the medical side of this and the science side of this, people that are experts in areas that I'm not, the question is, how do we weigh in their thinking with where we're currently at with COVID numbers in our part of this state? So, was that for tiptoeing around the answer? I don't know, but I wouldn't have put it on the slide if I didn't think it was very relevant information that should be considered by everybody in this room. I didn't say it had to be the number one overriding factor, but in my mind, we would be terribly remiss as educators to not try to educate ourselves on what the experts in the field are telling us.
Okay, ma'am, you may start, and I'm sorry, but I missed your name. Could you please tell us your name again?
Jill Ewald Chain.
Jill?
Yep. All right. Thank you for the medical freedom this summer in terms of mask wearing. I hope you can implement mask choice for the fall as well. Let families make these medical choices for themselves. In Wisconsin, we have three exemptions for vaccines. Masking exemptions should be no different as they are considered medical devices. We've always had different illnesses come through schools and a varied background of vaccine status. We've never treated anyone as being sick by masking and quarantining them just because of a close contact. This overreach has to end. I do not and will not co-parent with the school, school board, health department, county, state, CDC, or any form of government or organization. Only my husband and I get to decide what's best for our child. We, the parents, will applaud and support schools and school, schools and school boards that support and respect a parent's right to choose. Please do the right thing in making masks a parent's choice. Please make them optional.
Would anyone else like, oh, I see someone coming.
My name is Teresa Cohen, and I have four children. We're planning to send our two oldest boys to Westside for the coming year. They'll be in first and third grade after we did virtual school last year. Both of my boys have an incredible need for in-person learning this year, especially one of my sons. Though we did, you know, we thought the virtual school was a great fit for us last year, we began to worry about the son's mental health after he told us more than once that he no longer felt that he was a part of this world. The precautions put in place last year ensured that kids stayed in school and that cases were well managed. After last year, we began to feel more comfortable with the idea of sending our boys back to in-person learning. The Delta variant, rising cases, and now news that masks may not be required this year have thrown our plans into question for us again. As of July, 335 kids in the U.S. have died of COVID, but zero are dead from wearing a mask. Unless your child has a severe developmental delay, there is proven to be no harm in children wearing masks, no medical harm. My husband and I are vaccinated, but we've gone back to wearing masks in indoor public spaces due to the low vaccination rates in our area and the increased severity of the Delta variant because we do not want to risk spreading COVID to our children and others in our community. Our family has made sacrifices to try to lessen the load of children physically in schools in the past year. A loud minority have been calling for the freedom to not mask, but that takes away our freedom to send our children to school in a safe environment. If some families are upset about mask requirements in school, then they absolutely can take advantage of virtual school this year. It's time again, with cases on the rise, for everyone to do their part to keep our unvaccinated children safe because they undoubtedly still need protecting. Not requiring masks would be letting down every parent and child in this community, whether they realize or acknowledge it or not. I implore you to make masks a requirement for the upcoming school year for the safety of our children and our community. Thank you.
My name is Barb Colpeen, and let's see, I have four children go through the school district. Steve said, obviously, I'm too old to have my own children in the school district. I do have a granddaughter who has gone to the Montessori in Westside. And so I speak, but I speak as a former school board member, and I swore I wasn't going to say anything tonight. I was just going to listen, and I have been listening. So I had to make a couple of comments. And the first is that masks are not medical devices. I made drugs and medical devices as a professional engineer for 15 years, actually, 25 years, if you count the masks and the infection prevention. Masks are not medical devices, so don't think they are. You know, a respirator is, but, you know, I just wanted to make that point. There is a difference. Masks, the ones that you sew yourself, that you buy at Holiday, are not regulated by either NIH or the FDA. So they're a whole different animal, and they don't provide as much protection as a respirator does. And the other comment I wanted to make is, I understand full well how hard your decisions are, and I totally respect and have my own sleepless nights thinking about the hard decisions that you guys have to make. So I do honor that. But when you're looking at statistics, statistics can lie. Again, probably Steve has done more on statistics than I have, but otherwise, other than Steve, I've probably spent more time manipulating numbers, looking at the data, trying to analyze it and figure it out than just about anybody here. And if we allow ourselves just to say, what is Pierce County, what's happening in Pierce County today? We're forgetting even St. Croix County. If we say 47% of the people are vaccinated, if you look down a line on the data, you know, it might say like everybody 16 and above is 47%. And that includes the 87% of the people. But then you start, this is a school term, disaggregating the data, then you'll see that maybe only 30% or between 30 and 40% of the 12 to 16-year-olds are vaccinated in this, in this state and in the county. And so be careful when you're actually quoting absolute numbers because they're not absolute. And then also be mindful of the fact that if your child is sitting in school, the child sitting next to them, maybe was in a wrestling tournament in Savage, Minnesota last weekend, and there have been outbreaks there. They are in a high transmission, extremely high transmission area. Those kids are not locked into the county. They get to travel. They can go to Target in Woodbury. They can go wherever. The kid sitting to the left of your child in school could have just come back from Disney World and, you know, interacted or been exposed to kids from Brazil, from wherever, around the whole world and sat on a plane. So statistics, I know you have to pick a number to use and a number to make decisions by, but be mindful that numbers will, that are too simplistic will lie to you and will not, you know, so they might give you a false sense of comfort. So just be mindful of that. And I know it's a horrible, hard decision to make, and I respect the work that goes into it.
Do we have anyone else who would like to address the school board? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Patsy Worrie, and I have four kids at the Montessori. They attended virtual for, until mid-March last year, and we're very grateful to go back and would not have gone back if the masking mandate was not in place. I actually pulled them out of summer school, and I know quite a few other parents who did as well because it's not just a parent making a choice for children. If you take away the mask mandate, you're allowing everyone else's parents to make choices for my children. And my children have underlying conditions for which COVID could be really not so great. And I know that they're not the only ones in the district, obviously. And I, I would hope that you all will consider the kids that have had to be home because they were uncomfortable with the what-ifs, their parents were uncomfortable with the what-ifs of last year, often because of health concerns, and the kids that have really suffered from not being able to be with their peers for a good part of the last year and a half, and how great it was for the students and the staff who were able to be in person though they were masking. There was a lot of learning going on, there was a lot of growth going on, there was a lot of good, positive mental health. And I fear that if you choose to ignore the science, especially about the Delta variant, which has obviously changed the game, we are not sitting here in December, we are not sitting here last year in June, July, August. It's a completely different wave that's coming, and if we go into it without a mask mandate, there's a great potential for the wave and the effect to be considerably worse than what we all endured last year. My kids, all four of them, need to go to school. They need to go to... They need to go to school not only for their academic learning, which has greatly suffered over the last almost year and a half, but certainly for their mental health. I have a six-year-old who does not want to live if she doesn't get to go to school and see friends and do normal things for a six-year-old and feed her brain. And she won't be able to do that because of her medical conditions and the other medical conditions in our family if the other kids are not masked. If you take away the masking mandate, what are you going to do? How are you going to enforce that? Are you going to have a list on the wall for the teachers so that they know which parents have said, "My child can be masked, my child cannot be masked"? Because I'll tell you what, my six-year-old is going to take her mask off when everyone else's children are doing it and saying, "Oh, nobody has to be masked," but it's not safe for her. And frankly, I believe it's helping our kids to understand that they can be good community members. And I would hope that we would be good and thoughtful and considerate community members to the rest of the community, including the kids in the school and the families around. Please, please require masks, especially, and I can't believe we're even discussing it, for the kids under 12 who do not have an opportunity to be fully vaccinated yet and will not certainly by the beginning of school.
Hello, I'm Shalan Nygaard. I am a graduate of River Falls, and my oldest child is a graduate of RFHS and UWRF. I have an 11-year-old and an eight-year-old that were both virtual the last year and a half, but were in Westside prior to that. I don't think I'm a COVID expert, but I do have a bachelor's degree in chemistry and biology. I worked for two pharmaceutical companies in Seattle, one of which created Tamiflu. So I had training in pandemic preparedness even before COVID was a thing. I get all of my information from reading scientific studies and listening to only the leading experts in areas such as infectious disease. Studies have shown this recent Delta variant to have a viral load 1,000 times higher than previous variants, regardless of if you're vaccinated or not. This means that infected people are contagious earlier and for a longer period of time. This also means that unlike previous variants, vaccinated people are potentially just as likely to pass COVID on to other people. Yes, vaccinated people are much less likely to get COVID themselves, so getting vaccinated protects you. But as Jamie said, only those over the age of 12 can be vaccinated by the time school starts. What about those under 12? We as parents have no ability to vaccinate our children in this age group. My guess is that probably about 25% of middle schoolers and 100% of elementary students fall into this age group of not having the ability to be vaccinated. Our only ability to protect these hundreds of children is through things like masking. As someone that lives with chronic illness, it is not just about the death rate. COVID can cause long-term health risks, long-term health effects like chronic fatigue, which is not fun to deal with. COVID can overwhelm the health system as we've seen even in our area. People that I know that got COVID last year, they had to go to La Crosse to be in a hospital because there was nowhere closer to River Falls. Nowhere in the cities had any beds available. They had to go to La Crosse to be in the hospital. Science is messy. I, I've seen this firsthand with being a scientist. We learn as scientists. We adapt. We are literally watching science happen in real time, and that's why it feels like everything's changing and the CDC doesn't know what they're talking about. But no, it's because scientists are doing their job. They're learning, they're researching, we're finding out, how does this transmit? How do people catch it? How can we treat people? This is all happening before our eyes. For those parents or families that are strongly opposed to mask-wearing, as I know, the district offers virtual schooling. For working parents, the state is offering subsidies for virtual school children to attend childcare so that parents can still work. I've spoken with numerous parents whose children have been in virtual school for the last one and a half years and who are ready for their children to be back in school with their peers. They've missed out on a lot, but only if masks or only if CDC guidelines are followed. Nobody likes masks. We didn't like wake up one day and be like, "God, I really want to wear a mask today." Like, nobody likes it, but we know that we can trust the experts, and the experts say that masking is necessary at this time. And we just, like, I think it would be a different, a different ballgame, I guess, if, if kids of all ages were able to be vaccinated at this point, and they can't. So I urge you to consider all of that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Christensen, and I have two children going into the school or going, one going into high school and one going into middle school. And I'm here tonight on behalf of my kids. I want to ask you to stay the course and continue with your optional masks for the new school year. Please let families decide if they want their children to wear masks or not, and please let their children have the right to breathe air again, please. And here are some points for you to consider. On July 21st, 2002, 2000, excuse me, 2021, the CDC came out with a lab alert and will be withdrawing the use of the real-time RT-PCR diagnostic panel to test for COVID-19. They state that the test cannot tell the difference between the flu and COVID-19. This makes me wonder if there really is a pandemic, honestly. This makes me furious. You're telling me that all of these tests, all these PCR tests were faulty and we can't believe it? Why are they waiting till December 31st to stop using these PCR tests? Just something to consider. Another thing to consider is that there's also with this CDC trying to justify their new mask guidance, they used a study from India that failed peer review. This study was a study on a vaccine that isn't even, isn't even approved in the United States. I've emailed everybody on the board, some of the articles that I'm referring to, so you can read up on them. Obviously, I can't get into them because I only have so much time, but at least you can take a look and see what you think. Another reason why I believe we should make the masks optional is because, and this is for everybody in the community, not just the kids going to school, we have three vaccines, we also have other, other drugs or therapeutics, excuse me, therapeutics like ivermectin and hydroxychloroquine that nobody talks about because it's been suppressed. These are possible, possible cures for COVID-19 so that people don't get sick and don't end up in the hospital. I also believe that we need to teach our children instead of masks, 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 social distancing, you know, use hand sanitizer, which is that even really that great for you, using that, those chemicals for your kids? Let's teach them to be healthier. Let's teach them how to, how to improve their immune system. These are just thoughts that I had as well. I think that we should keep the mask mandates optional, keep the masks optional for the next school year. I think we should be, this hasn't even talked about, but I just wanted to say from the last board meeting a couple weeks ago, let's keep the testing for COVID out of our schools. Let's also cease any future COVID-19 vaccination clinics out of our school district as well. They don't belong in our school district, on our school properties. And, you know, I please just let our children smile at each other, let them get smiles back from their teachers, and just let them breathe fresh air, please. Thank you very much for your time.
Would anyone else like to address the board? We're trying to keep comments to under two minutes, please.
Hello. I'm short, obviously. If I tilted down, I think it's going to fall.
I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. You're the, you're the main one I wanted to talk to. My name is Heather Lane. I have a child at Westside and another child about to go into 4K. I'd like to thank you, the board, the community, for coming and sharing your thoughts tonight, and also to Superintendent Benson. I'd like to thank you all for your hard work this year and for letting us have this opportunity to speak. I care very much about the safety and education of my children, and I am incredibly proud of the River Falls School District and all of the work you did last year in your success in preventing the spread of COVID in the schools. I recognize that some spread happened. I did read Superintendent Benson's emails pretty much every week and checked what those numbers were, especially at Westside. And, and there was some spread, but it was limited. One of the spread happened in my son's class. Half of the class was out for two weeks on quarantine due to close contact. After talking to the parents that were also affected, it sounded like it didn't spread at all, and I saw that as a huge success, that that mitigation was in place and that children didn't get sick from it. That one, two weeks of virtual school was very difficult, and I applaud all of the parents, all of you that put up with that. You're a lot stronger than I am. Good job. But I would like to talk to you, you know, I would like to encourage you to repeat those successes of last year in this upcoming school year by following the advice of, of the experts and looking on your successes and applying that to this year as well. A Wall Street Journal article from February said that COVID spread in schools is much lower when the students wear masks. And then it cited a CDC study on schools here in Wisconsin. So there's some, some great information that's pretty local to us. The CDC director said, "We know that most clusters in the school setting have occurred when there are breaches in mask-wearing." And in the past month, the American of Pediatrics also recommended that everyone over two wear a mask at school, per the information that Superintendent Benson shared with us. One of the members of the, the American Academy of Pediatric Council on Student Health, Dr. Sarah Bodie, said, "There are many children and others who cannot be vaccinated. This is why it's important to use every tool in our toolkit to safeguard our children from COVID-19. Universal masking is one of those tools, and it has been proven effective in protecting people against other respiratory diseases as well." Did my mic cut out? There we go. And I can say, I have, my son, he's in kids' club. Masking's optional there. Every day, we leave him there with a mask. Every day when I come home to pick him up, it's not on. I know that optional doesn't work because we are experiencing it. In addition to his time at kids' club, only this summer, he's missed about a week and a half of, of class that we've paid for because he's been sick, because he's contracted respiratory illnesses, most likely there. It's our only vector in. Whereas during the school year, other than the two-week quarantine, he only missed three days. So that also tells me that there's something there in the masking. I mean, granted, we're an insights of one, but it's still something that happened to us and something that's personal. So I'd like to close with that. We've seen success with masking in our own school district, and the experts are asking for everyone to wear masks in school. We should follow the advice of science, follow the data, and listen to the experts to keep our children safe and educated this school year. Thank you.
Hi, guys. My name's Amber Morgan, and I'm a pediatrician here in River Falls. Jamie called me today to ask about this, and so I actually felt compelled that I needed to come down and just tell you guys kind of straight up, you know, we really recommend that we keep the masks. I would agree with all of the other folks in the room who have talked about your successes this last year. Our mission statement is to keep, provide a safe environment for all students, and I really think masking is the way to do that. I have two children, but I have a patient panel of over 1,000 people in our community, and because I'm a pediatrician, most of them attend your school district. So please continue with your successes and wear the masks.
Good evening. My name's Nathan Seko, and I have a child going into first grade at Rocky Branch Elementary. I didn't plan on saying something tonight, but I, I just wanted to make one comment or bring it up that I'd really like to see a survey sent out to parents just to get a, a general idea and everyone's opinion on this. Obviously, a handful of people that come here can have a wide range of views, so I would just, I'm on the side of, I would like to keep masks optional, but it would help me to know, you know, if it's 80% of people that want to keep masks, that would help me see that point of view. But the other question I'd have would be, this summer and summer school, were there outbreaks? How did everything go? I mean, yes, there's some sickness that goes around. To me, that's natural, that happens with kids. Let me see if I have anything else I have here. Like I said, this is very off the cuff. Yeah, that's really all I have. Thank you.
I see nobody moving toward the mic, so I'm going to assume everybody who has had a chance, who wanted to speak, has had a chance. Okay. So we're a smaller size board, even though Bob is here, it's a bit complicated for us to have conversation. I think that this is a night for us mostly to be able to absorb what people have said and to be able to get a shape of what the potential options are. But I welcome board members now to have some conversation among ourselves and with, with our superintendent.
Yeah, I can make a few comments. I, I did a, I didn't do a straw poll and keep track of the comments that were made tonight, but I'm going to say roughly 50/50. I did track the most recent, probably 50 emails that we've received, and it wasn't exactly 50/50, but in regard to a survey, I'm going to say it seems to be, I would say it's within 10 to 15% based on the comments and feedback that we receive and the people that I've reached out to within the community. So I, I don't have that exact information, but it, it would be great to know. It's, it's still not going to solve, unfortunately, some of the, the cases that were shared here tonight on, on either side of that. If, if those people fall in a 1% or a 5% minority, it's, it's still going to leave them on either side of things kind of left, left out to dry there. So my, my personal preference going into the summer was to do mask optional all the way through, and I think, I haven't seen a whole lot of reason to change that. It's, it's starting to, you know, I thought things went pretty smooth this summer. I haven't, I haven't heard of anything that, that tells me otherwise in regard to our district. Some of the things are getting a little bit harder to, to overlook or to just kind of keep the focus on our district and the numbers that we're seeing because it has been very positive from all indications I've had up to this point. So my initial preference, I think, at this point would still be to stay with that course. I think my second preference would be to look at option number two and that Jamie presented, but I, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be totally against us going with masks either. So I, I don't know where the middle ground is. I, I think if I had to vote on it today, I'd probably still be in the camp of option one, maybe option two as a fallback for myself. And I should say that, too, I do have, not attending summer I do have, not attending summer school, but I do have a child who has attended kids' club all year, and so I've been in the building, experienced that, and had a chance to get a little bit of feedback from that perspective, too.
You know, I don't know where I sit on this right now. No, I shouldn't say I don't know where I sit. I think this is very complicated. This is very complicated, and it's, I appreciate the fact that we're having this information tonight, Jamie, and taking a public comment, and we've gotten lots of comments via email and other ways, and I'm sure it's gonna continue this, just like a year ago when we were deciding on what we were gonna do in the fall. And as a board, the one thing we could agree on is the fact that whatever we decided was not gonna be universally popular and that all of our options were, were not what we would choose if we could, that we had hard choices to make last fall, and we didn't like any of them, but we had to choose a course and go with it, and we're faced here again. So I'm anxious to see where we are next week. I'm anxious to see the three board members who aren't here tonight. I'm anxious to listen to their conversation, and we need to sort of shake, shake this out a little bit more and hear what everybody has got to say, because we've gotta come to some agreement on what our policy's gonna be on the fall. The one observation I have about this, I just haven't, I've been thinking about this for the last few days, that a year ago, where we were a year ago, and the conversations we were having as a board, the conversations we were having as a community, the conversations we were having nationally, were, the only way we're gonna get out of this is if we can get a vaccine soon, and the efforts to get the vaccine, and we were all anxious about the vaccine. How soon is the vaccine gonna come? And I gotta credit President Trump for this, and our, some of the leaders out there really moved this through and came up with some options for us for vaccines by December. And we were so anxious about it. President Trump and his family were among the first to get vaccinated. All the former presidents got vaccinated. Everybody was just all excited about being vaccinated, and the rate of vaccination was very high up until about the end of April, early May. Free vaccinations available to everybody. Who would have thought a year ago, when we were all so desperate for something, that here we would be all these months later, a year later in thinking about it, eight months after the development and rollout of the free vaccine, that we would have less than 50% of the people in this county fully vaccinated? Now, if you would have told me that a year ago, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have believed it. I wouldn't have believed it. And quite frankly, if we had been, if right now we are where we assumed we would be a year ago, we wouldn't be having this conversation. The reason we're talking about masks tonight is that less than 50% of the population in this, both these counties, okay? And regionally, there's only a few spots that are really a lot better than what we are right now. And as a result, the virus continues to grow and mutate and all of that. So we can't fix what hasn't happened, but I just think that that's an observation, that people's individual choice to not get vaccinated, and I respect that, everybody's got their choice about it, has implications for the community. And one of the implications for that is what we're talking about tonight and what we'll be talking about next Monday night, so.
So I would just like to thank everybody who came tonight and had the courage to stand up and share your opinions and your thoughts. I also have received lots of emails over the past week or so, and I would just encourage anybody who's tuning in via live stream, please continue to share with us where you're at on this. I'm new to this ballgame. I was just appointed last month. But I can say with certainty that one of the great things about our board is that we really represent a variety of backgrounds and perspectives. And my impression thus far is that we all are trying to recognize and understand that there are a variety of opinions that are held by the people in our community. We want to respect that, and we want to understand where everyone is coming from. The point of this was to offer some transparency to the community and to help you understand the unique situation that we're in. This is a very difficult situation. I also was in favor of optional masking in the summer. I have four young kids. I've watched the pediatric data since the start of COVID. That appears to be the one thing that has not significantly changed. That has kind of been the one constant throughout this whole thing, and I do take comfort in that. My kids are not yet eligible for vaccination. And in my mind, I am thinking about those kiddos, particularly pre-K through sixth grade, who are not eligible for the vaccine if that was something their family chose for them. I'm looking at some of the social, emotional, and academic implications that come from masking. And so that's something that is weighing on me, and I'm trying to balance that against the risk of serious illness. It's low, fortunately, at this point for the majority of our kids. This will not be an easy decision for any of us, but I just really encourage you all to continue sharing your feedback and your thoughts and your perspectives with us. So thank you.
I'm the last one here, so it's my turn. I've been doing a lot of homework. I'm not a scientist, and so I am not able to evaluate scientific articles or findings, but I do have some background reading educational journals and articles and research. So what I did is I started looking up Harvard and Stanford and Northwestern universities to determine what their scientists were looking at, particularly related to the social-emotional impacts of COVID on kids. And one of the things that I am reading very consistently is that scientists are finding, researchers are finding, that virtual learning has been very difficult for kids socially and emotionally. That, I think, is going to be an extraordinarily strong guiding principle for me as I cast my vote. I want to protect in-person learning because I think that it is in the social, emotional, and academic best interests of our students. Exactly how this all works out is left to be determined, but that is what I will be keeping in my mind.
I didn't want to jump in if you weren't done. So I was gonna add a few more things, one that you just touched on. We haven't surveyed the board or the administration, but I, I think the one thing that I observed being different from where we were last year is talking about a learning environment versus, you know, all-in-person, hybrid at different grade levels, and, or all at-home learning. I don't hear that conversation. I don't think that's on the table at this point. But if, if the, something that would probably change or sway my opinion in regard to masks is if, if the, there's something that tells me the kids that we're having to exclude for close contacts last year became, became a problem. If those types of things aren't having to happen, if masks are involved, I probably feel a little bit differently than I would when we looked at it for summer school. The, the other part would be, is, is if it means, you know, preventing some sort of shift in the learning environment. I'm, I'm gonna be in favor of going to masks as a first option across the board before I would be in favor of excluding additional kids from, from class, close-contact quarantine, you know, if we can find ways to eliminate some of those other things that became big problems for us. I view the masks as a, if the masks are a way to do that, it probably changes my opinion on where I stand there.
I agree, Todd. I mean, I think that, I mean, we heard repeatedly many significant stories of how the close-contact quarantine was really difficult on kids. And if we can prevent that, we are supporting them academically, and we are protecting their social-emotional well-being. So.
I know it's too simple to say it this way, but if you told me that no kid would be excluded from being too close to a positive case throughout the year because there were masks on, I would say, put masks on and don't even think about it. But I don't know the reality or, you know, how likely we are to achieve something like that just by adding the mask. I don't think it's quite that simple, unfortunately.
I wish that we had 100% guarantees on everything. I think we don't, but I think that we can find some ponderance of the evidence.
Can you help me just provide a little bit of background? Because I was not sitting on this stage, however, long ago, back in August, when you were making these very important decisions. Can you remind me what the recommendation was from the CDC in August when you were trying to determine the, how to make school happen as far as in-person, virtual? What was the recommendation at that time? Do you all remember?
I think I'm correct in saying it was a six-foot rule, even if you're wearing a mask, if you're within six feet of a person who tested positive, you're considered a close contact, therefore you will be quarantined under what used to be a 14-day rule. Then they changed it to a 10-day rule that you could reduce to seven days if you tested negative, and so they did move off of that 14-day rule. But it was originally the six-foot rule and so on. Then, when it changed down to...
I'm asking, actually, yeah. The school environment. What was the, what was the CDC and the AAP, forgive me, the acronym? What was the recommendation at that time? Because I think something that I'm mindful of is that the implications of virtual school or learning at home, I think not everybody fully understood the ramifications of that and the impact that it would have on social, emotional, and academic development. And so I'm, I'm just trying to look into the future and go, what are we gonna look back on and question or, or wonder if that was the right choice? And so that's what I'm trying to understand. Certainly, the board made the decision to, to veer from some recommendations from public health, and so I'm, I'm just trying to get a sense of, in the previous decisions you had made, what was the, what gave you the sense that it was appropriate to go against the recommendations? If that makes sense?
I don't, I don't recall there being discussion about a universal CDC, or I don't even remember hearing the term AAP up until the last couple of weeks or month or two. And so I don't remember there being a universal. It was kind of, Wisconsin made a decision as a state in March of 2020 that ran through the year, and then it was kind of figure it out locally with your, that's how I remember it. But I'll be honest, a year and a half or a year ago feels like three lifetimes.
It turned me on, almost, doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah. But I don't remember there being a defined guideline CDC, because the mask mandates weren't happening even at like the state level until around the time we were having these conversations, like roughly July, August of last year. And we were already kind of down the road of making some of these decisions. So I don't even remember it being part of the discussion, because it was more, the state has pulled back, there's not gonna be a universal requirement across the state, figure it out locally is how I remember it being, but.
So just to clarify, but there was no recommendation from the CDC to keep kids home, that kids should stay home in the fall of last year?
I, not a direct answer to your question, but I will say in the last few months, I personally, from following some of these experts, I think that there's a growing set of consensus that one of the learning lessons that we have from the last year and a third that we've dealt with COVID is the social-emotional impact on kids of not being in school. The evidence related to masks having a profound negative impact on students' livelihood, academic progress, and so on, I think, from what I, well, I know from what I've seen is a little less. Point is this, the CDC, other experts are agreeing, we need to get the kids in school, where previously their message was, hang on a second, you gotta watch out for the COVID cases in your area, you might be wise to follow this Harvard model. When it shifts over to yellow and goes to orange, you better shut her down, you better send people home. And, you know, we purposefully did not commit ourselves as a district to any magical formula. We debated it, we talked about it. We behind-the-scenes were collecting data on the number of total close contacts, the number of positive cases. We had a grid that we made kind of our homemade matrix, and we were monitoring it, but we didn't want to make that commitment that we were lockstep to some new number that was gonna control the day. But I'm reminded all of this, when you asked those questions, that one of my slides on here, I had that Harvard model on there and said, the reason I'm putting this on here is because some people are asking for, maybe we should have a number that says if you're gonna pivot from something, whether it's no masks, optional masks, or whatever, what's gonna be that lever, what's gonna be that trip that's gonna cause that? Frankly, we've been reluctant to commit ourselves to an actual mathematical formula, but some would argue, maybe that kind of formula, some would see it less nebulous, perhaps, more objective than subjective. We haven't, we haven't landed on that formula for tonight either, but I'm curious to hear if the board would like to see that become a part of the proposal that is put in front of you a week from tonight.
If, just to kind of respond to Lindsay there, I don't, we, we used guidelines from Pierce County and the national CDC, but most school districts were left to figure this out pretty much, and that's kind of how we went through this. So what drove, when were we following? Pierce County is 100%, when weren't we? That was part of discussion. And this is an evolutionary process, and this board works really good at sort of talking through stuff, and so we all kind of understand what each other is saying, so we can come to some kind of agreement. There's part of me that says, I envy the certainty that a number of people who have talked to us tonight and sent us email can have, okay? That's a luxury that us as board members don't always have if we're gonna follow our responsibility as board members, that we need to listen, and we need to tune in, and we need to really pay attention, and we can't just make up our mind and come in, okay? I don't think that's a responsible position. We gotta have to continue to talk through this and figure it out. Like I say, we've got three other board members here who we need to hear about. I would say, another comment, as I've thought about this too, so what are these factors? I mentioned one earlier about the vaccines. Another is, in my time on the board, we've had a number of issues about student safety that we have dealt with. And when there was the, a lot of concern, I'll put it that way, about active shooters in buildings, and, and that was, there was almost an epidemic of that going across the country, and what were we doing as individual school districts, and what was our district doing to mitigate some of those things? There were times when I began to wonder, maybe we're going too far in some of the things we did. We did a lot. We spent a lot of money on our buildings to make them more secure in many, many ways. These buildings are not like they were 15 years ago at all in the way in which we deal with our students. And often, I heard people saying, you know, questioning the cost or questioning the procedures or what we were doing, and gee, now people have to check into the office more, more carefully and all these kinds of things. Have you ever had a problem with this? You know, no, we'd never had a problem with this. Have you ever had an active shooter? No. That doesn't mean we don't do, we didn't do these kinds of things to prevent. So, point being, where I'm going with this, with this comment, is as a board, our, our goal has always been to prevent disaster, prevent episodes that put students in crisis safety-wise, rather than to say, well, let's wait till somebody dies, or let's wait till somebody has a severe reaction, or we have a severe outbreak, and then we're gonna do something about it. That wouldn't be this board's response to it. But I think that, so that needs to be behind what we're doing. Just because something hasn't happened doesn't necessarily mean it won't. I'm using that logic because that's, I'm stating that logic, because that's the logic we've used on every other safety issue that this board has dealt with. What our mitigation is going forward on this particular one, I'm not quite sure yet. Something we gotta decide probably by next week. But I would just lay that out there, that just because stuff hasn't happened doesn't mean it won't. And I would say, quite frankly, the reason that that summer went so well this year is because of all the mitigation efforts we did this last year. I can't help but think that that didn't put us in a much better situation this summer. I can't help but think that that didn't put us in a much better situation this summer than we would have had if we hadn't have done that.
One of the questions that Jamie asked us is if we were interested in a threshold or what indicator, is that the word that you asked? And so I'll respond to that. Yes, my answer is yes. Exactly what that would be and if it's even possible to think of a magic number or what a threshold would be, I don't know. But the reason I say yes, I think we have to have that conversation is, my assumption is that when we make a decision next week, we're not making a decision for the next nine months because I think the reality is going to change enough that we will need to come back and revisit it. Exactly what will trip having it on the agenda to revisit it again? I don't know exactly. But sometimes the awareness that it needs to come back is what we need too. And so in the absence of a magic number, maybe there would be some other ways of thinking about when we would come back. So I'm voting yes. I just don't know about a threshold. I just don't know exactly how we would accomplish it.
Oh, put your mic.
Just a, Bob, just one second. We're going to put another mic by you.
Board member Bob Casey is joining by telephone. And we want to see if we can have him be heard a little better.
Okay, start again, Bob.
You mentioned the desire to have a matrix. And I think that's a really good idea to like take a look at. Obviously, positive tests, maybe outbreaks and that type of thing, but also vaccination rates, these types of things would be important to weigh in.
So I think, Bob, if I heard much of it about perhaps a matrix would be one way of going, that we would have a variety of measures within the matrix, including vaccination rate. I don't think I caught the other things that you would include in the vaccination, in the matrix.
I would look at, I feel this year very similar to last. In that, I don't like to add the concept of a matrix. The matrix, I think, would be looking at the similar things we looked at before, positive rates and hospitalization rates in the event of last year. But also vaccination rate and then outbreaks inside our school. I would like, you know, like some board members wanting to do anything and if it's for those kids, five days a week, probably when we can do that, what we can do is come in here.
It's pretty miraculous that he's able to come in anyway because he, to participate remotely in a meeting. But the sound is a little bit challenging. Bob, we will have more conversation with you. I think the important contribution that you've just made in that comment has to do with looking at a matrix, which gets us away from needing to find one magic number and looks at a variety of measures. I think I also heard you talk about the importance of five-day-a-week in-person school. So I'll say that to get everybody, in case not everybody was able to hear you.
I thought my Jamie feedback offline is the criteria that I would look at. Could I be a little bit easier to convey that via phone or email to Jamie? That, uh, thanks probably.
Perfect. So Bob just said that he was going to convey some other ideas, some other criteria that could potentially be on the matrix to Jamie that we could all consider at a later point.
Let's say one more thing that, you know, we've had this conversation at the place I work with, I think from the conversations I've had with people in the community who have kids at different levels, one of the things that's going to factor into my decision is the fact that, to Alan's point, when the vaccine was initially being rolled out and there were people who may have said, in the normal course, I don't want to do it for myself. But to avoid the possibility of having to wear the mask or, you know, to help further that along, I did it. And to take that away now is something that would be difficult for me. And so that's another consideration that would be hard and would lead me to potentially want to break out the group that does have that ability to say, I've made the choice to either do this or not. And to me, you're, at that point, you're assuming more of the risk personally than the people who shared stories about their kids that are under the age of 12 and don't have that choice yet. So, you know, I don't know if there's a middle ground when the time comes to vote on this. But something that would be a consideration of that, maybe finding a middle ground between the options that are presented, one and three, is option two does allow for the people that made that choice and felt that it was a responsible choice, even if it's something they didn't necessarily want to do because it wouldn't exclude them as a close contact. And it would make it more likely that masks weren't worn. I mean, that, again, that was something I dealt with in a business setting, but also have heard that same sentiment in regard to 15-year-old kids or high school kids that made that choice when they had the option. I think initially it was 16 and over and then went down to 12. So again, I feel like there's more choice to be had for that age group. I don't necessarily like breaking them out into two. But I think that's an important point, at least in the consideration that I've had up until now in trying to weigh that.
It is super disappointing to have to be reconsidering these things. I actually frankly thought last year was going to be the really hard year. And I can hear what you're saying, Todd. I think that before we would make a decision on that basis, we'd probably have to get more clarity about the potential for vaccinated people to be spreaders that would then impact the young ones who haven't been able to be in a double way. So we have to think about that.
The tough thing for somebody like me is to know, you know, is the spread the issue or is the severity of it the issue? And hard to weigh that out too, because that's a difficult piece of it. I mean, you know, a lot of people getting colds, but there's not a terrible consequence to something like that. And the unknown of it is a little daunting. But the, from all indications of things that I hear up to this point, you know, beyond kids not being very seriously at risk is that people who have chosen to take a vaccine are also seeing much less in terms of the severity compared to where we were the first time around with some of this. So the case numbers are important to look at, but also the severity of it and what people's personal choice might mean in that regard. I feel better about it for the people who have that choice. And I do feel differently about it for those that probably don't at this point.
Just, again, one other observation. I think that, I can't speak for the board, but I, it appears to me that one of the things the board may agree on already is that we want the students back in school this fall, right? We're not going to, we're not considering hybrid again. We're not considering any of those more draconian mitigation strategies. We're not talking about any of that. So we're really talking about how we get them back in the classroom, face-to-face, instructional learning with instructors in front of the class and how we do that. And masks is one thing we're going to be talking about, but there may be some other things we're talking about.
I agree, Alan. I'll just, I'll add one point to that. And that would be to say, for the families that are choosing in-person. Because we will be keeping the virtual option because that's the most appropriate for some kids.
Good point.
I think in my mind, when I think about top priority, top priority obviously is allowing the opportunity for all kids who choose to come five days a week. We want all those kids in-person, five days a week. Whoever chooses that option versus the virtual school. The next, in my mind, would be the contact tracing. We don't want kids being pushed out of school because they've been close contacted. And then the third would be the masking. Those are kind of, in my mind, the priorities.
And how they relate to each other is the complicated thing. Because it could be that we have to go to masks in order to achieve the top and not have the close contact.
Although it's interesting because last year we did mask throughout the entirety of the pandemic. And yet we still had to. Our numbers did hit a level at certain points in the year where we did have to shut down and swap the grade seven through 12 to virtual or distance learning. So even with the mitigation efforts, they're not foolproof, right? And certainly we still, you know.
I think of it as like sunscreen. It's not going to prevent me from getting sunburned out there, but it's going to allow me to be out there longer. But part of the issue about the close contacts is now that the guidelines have changed somewhat.
Yeah, for us too, this is, this is good conversation because we, again, purposefully felt like we needed to have the most conversation regarding the masking topic. But to be clear, the board already put in place and we are not considering any revision to. This summer, we used the three-foot rule for close contact tracing, not six. And the experts would say, we're fine with you using a three-foot rule as long as everybody is wearing a mask. Otherwise, you should still be using the old six-foot rule. We're not even talking about that. We're going to be presenting next week to you that we're going to follow a three-foot rule, whether you wear a mask, not wear a mask, whatever that decision is, wherever the board lines up on that. Close contact tracing should, you would think mathematically, if we're at three feet instead of six, you would hope those numbers would go down. Now we have a variant that might be more transmittable. So we don't know. But I just wanted to really clarify, you know, we're not talking about fall sports either, are we? We're not even having that conversation. Recommendation is, we're going to move ahead with that. We're not talking about band and chorus. We're going to sing songs and play music.
And game club and chess club and all of those.
All kinds of clubs and organizations.
Because we know that those things are really important to our kids.
Top priority is in-school learning opportunities for those that are comfortable with that. And for those that are not, we have the virtual option. Hottest topic of all is clearly the mask debate.
I think a close second though is that close quarantine.
True. I may be presumptuous. The focus has been on this mask topic more so than the close contact tracing.
Jamie, I think in your presentation earlier, you made mention of equity and the ability to deliver instruction to as many kids as possible and to make sure that we are providing what all students need. And so in thinking about the masking, I do just want to share something that I've really been thinking a lot about. I've talked to some classroom teachers from 4K up to, I believe, second grade. I've heard from some parents. And there are a handful of student groups that I think we at least need to have the conversation about how masking could impact their ability to engage in learning. The first group in my mind is the K-2 students that, we know early literacy is so important. Kids are not reading at grade level by second grade. Their trajectory is way off in the future. And I know, as I was a classroom teacher, kindergarten and first grade, and in talking to other teachers of those primary grades, phonemic awareness, phonics instruction, segmenting words and isolating sounds, those are all very, very difficult in those primary classrooms when you have a mask on the teacher and a mask on the student. And I think that's important to consider, the potential ramifications. I'm not saying those outweigh the potential medical risk. I'm just saying we have to at least acknowledge the potential of that impact on our students in the years that lie ahead. The other group of students that I'm thinking about are Title I students who are already facing some learning struggles. They've likely incurred some learning loss over this past year. Those are our kiddos that are really, really needing those intense academic interventions. A lot of times they're working one-on-one with an instructor or a teacher. And I, again, I, there is, there's a barrier there. And it's difficult to learn with those masks on, particularly if you're focusing on literacy. I also have learned since joining the board that we have a growing number of English language learners in our district. And I cannot imagine how much more difficult it would be for students to enter our buildings not having English as their primary language and be trying to engage with their peers, with their teachers, when you can't see the mouth of the person you're talking to or hear properly the language that's being spoken. And then also our special education kiddos. I think it's important that we give voice to those students and their parents. For those students who are receiving special education services, we have to acknowledge that there are students who are going to feel distress or anxiety or discomfort when wearing a mask. And then also students receiving speech and language services. That's basically what they're working on is communication and articulation. And that's challenging when faces are covered. And then last, I mentioned this earlier, but I do just, I just want to make this point again. Young children are relying on facial recognition for all kinds of early childhood development and just basic social competence. And I know one of our district goals is to provide that social and emotional support for our staff and students. And I think, again, I'm not making a proclamation that health is, you know, the health side of the coin is more important than the social, emotional side. But we just have to acknowledge that there are things that our students are not going to receive in their experience at school if their faces are covered and their teachers' faces are covered.
Very, very important points.
You know, just to pick up on that, that what it comes down to, we had this conversation very intensely last summer. And some of the stuff you're talking about is exactly why I wouldn't have supported, in fact, talked against going totally online. That was one of our options out there, going totally online. But what we're faced with, once again, because you've sort of laid out part of this, is if there's only two choices here, which are we going to give priority to? Social and emotional health or physical health? And we've literally, the dichotomy we have here is we've pitted one against the other. And at what point do we say that social, emotional health is more important than physical health? Or physical health is more important than social, emotional health? Can we kind of figure out a middle way? So I don't disagree with any of those kinds of things. I think our teachers work best when they're there face-to-face with our students in lifetime, especially young learners. Does that put them at risk for physically, their physical health? That's what we're trying to all grapple with. That's what everybody in the country is trying to grapple with right now in the way we're trying to figure out a path here. So does doing all of that put them at risk in another way? Or does doing some of the other limitation mitigation things put their social, emotional health at risk?
And of course, it is a false dichotomy, isn't it? To be thinking that we can even separate these.
Yes, yes, exactly.
I mean, we're all, we're all integrated humans.
Yeah, the other thing too is that the answer to that question varies kid by kid based on some of the experience. You know, some kids, the physical safety is far beyond the, you know, the facial expressions and those kind of things due to their circumstance. And in other cases, it's the exact opposite end of that spectrum. So I think everybody knows that. But it just maybe illustrates what you said earlier, that we don't have the luxury of dealing in absolutes the way that some of the stories share, unfortunately. I was going to ask, is there anything that the administration is looking for beyond the conversation tonight? Or do we just take that and then wait till next week with a recommendation?
No, we, again, the purpose of the meeting tonight, we intentionally wanted the public to know that we're listening and to not only public opinion, but we're also listening to quote-unquote, "the experts." We want to be transparent and allow community members to speak with the board, for community members to hear where the board is currently at. Give the board a week, come back next Monday. We need to let people know what the plan is. Our staff needs to know, parents, students, and so on. And so we're, we're at the point where we just wanted to talk about all these issues and see if there were some common themes, some new ideas that came forth, plant some ideas inside the board that maybe you have not heard from other parents until tonight. And part of it, I think, is an effort to make a public statement and show how we have civil conversation and civil debate over a pretty challenging topic. And so I appreciate. And so I appreciate everybody's approach in voicing your opinions tonight. Might not be a coincidence that we have our character posters on the stage tonight. I'm not sure how they ended up here, but rather symbolic considering what we're looking for. Gotta support each other with this. I'm very convinced personally that I'm proud of our administrative team. I'm proud of this board and I'm proud of our staff. When you take the efforts that we did last year in conjunction with what Scott Simpson in the City Hall did, what Connie Foster in the UWRF did to mitigate the further spread, big entities, lots of people in those places, city level, university level, school level, employees, people being served, actions of local businesses complying with some of these orders. To your earlier question, the governor at one point had issued a mask order. Supreme Court said, not so fast, you don't have that authority. We ended up staying the course even though the Supreme Court said. So initially, we were following a governor's order. We ended up staying the course with it is how that went down. At any rate, everybody has their story, everybody has their version of the truth and what should be done. And I appreciate again, everybody being here tonight to help the board contemplate and myself as well, some more challenging decisions that lie ahead for next Monday night.
You know, it strikes me that often we are in a very difficult position having to choose between two good options. And that's hard enough, let alone when we're in a position of having to make decisions between options that we really don't like. But that's where we're at and thank you, everybody, for being good partners in all this. So, do you wanna say one?
So I shared some thoughts earlier, you know, in regard to where it stands. It's not definite, it wouldn't be definite two weeks from now if we voted today. And honestly, I'll be surprised if we make a decision that for one way or the other goes through the end of this coming school year. So the one thing I'm not, I'm definitely not in favor of is trying to make a recommendation that's going to draw a line between masks for vaccinated, unvaccinated and trying to discern that and enforce it. I have no interest in doing that kind of thing. So the one kind of absolute that I'm, you know, for me, that I'd like to see with the recommendation is, is, you know, the options that are laid out, but not trying to distinguish anything between people who are vaccinated or not. To me, it's optional or it's mandatory. And whether we differentiate the grade level is great, but I, I'm not in the business of trying to ask, you know, each individual person when they walk into a building. And I just have no interest in trying to police that. Or not myself, I guess, but whoever would be charged with that, I have no interest in it.
I agree, I agree. And I think that, so we've had some agreement about that. We've also talked about this idea of a matrix with some criteria, which I think connects to the earlier point that you made, Todd, about when we do vote, we're not making a decision for the entire year. Oh, I think that would be very unwise. Things are changing so quickly. Plus, we like to be able to respond to what's going on in our community when it, at the time. That doesn't mean being reckless or changing more than is necessary, but we want to be responsible, so. So presently, we have a lot of thinking to do. Jamie has some work to do. Thank you, everybody. And we'll be back here again. The meeting is adjourned.